Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to tonight's meeting of the Portsmouth Planning Board. It's August 6th, 2009, and I'd like to open the public hearing. This is a public hearing convened to solicit public comment on draft revised zoning ordinance dated June 11th, 2009, and the draft revised site plan review regulations dated April 24th, 2008. Copies of these documents are available for public inspection in the planning department, the public library, and on the city website. So I'd like to turn it over to Rick Tainter to get us started with some review of the process.
Thank you. I'm going to do a presentation. The previous two public hearings have -- the presentation has run a little bit long, and so I've tried to cut it down some, but I'm going to just give some background about the zoning ordinance changes, how we got to where we are, and some of the major changes that are being proposed. Also, I've handed out a one-page list of comments that were received at the last two public hearings, and I'll talk a little bit about them at the very end of the presentation. But we will be, as we take comments here, and on the web, and written, and on the phone, however they come in, we will be adding to this, and that will serve as a checklist for the planning board as they review the draft after the usual public hearings. Just a little bit about the scope of what we're doing. We're talking primarily about the revised zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance has district regulations which address uses that are allowed and prohibited, or that might be allowed by special exception or conditional use permit. They include environmental protection standards, historic preservation requirements, issues relating to site developments such as parking, loading, signs, outdoor lighting, and so forth. And then there are some changes, considerable changes in the ordinance relating to format and structure of the ordinance, the way it appears, the way it's organized, and the number of terms that are defined and how they're shown in the ordinance. But then in addition to the zoning ordinance, the other half of that is the zoning map, which actually shows where the zoning districts and the overlay districts are. We're proposing some new districts, a new district called the Gateway District, which is -- will replace some business zoning along some of the major corridors coming into the city, and we're coming up with a new concept of sign districts that are distinct from the use districts. And then there will be boundary changes to existing districts that will be proposed. And the planning board is going to have a workshop on these zoning map changes, on some zoning map changes, at the beginning of their regular meeting, or before their regular meeting, on August 20th. That'll be the first time they've looked at zoning map changes altogether. Then beyond the zoning, there are the site plan review regulations, which are planning board regulations that address how a specific development is laid out on the site and looks at impacts such as traffic and stormwater and so forth. And then there will be required changes to other ordinances. There'll be changes to the -- that the city council would have to adopt in order to make the zoning changes effective. That would be including changing the current authorization for site plan review to extend down to three and four unit structures, which currently only applies to five units and more, and looking at some of the performance standards that overlap between city ordinances and zoning ordinances, and looking at the planning board ordinance. Just as background, the last major revision of the zoning ordinance was in 1995. Since that time, there have been many incremental changes, many of which responded to specific issues that came up at a time, and so zoning changes made to respond to that, and as a result, there have been many layers of changes over time. There have been some federal and state laws that have come into play in the last few years that require changes in the zoning ordinance to conform to that, and there have been some recent changes that have been adopted independently in the zoning ordinance before, just before and while this process has been going on. Some of the objectives of doing this study and this process of revising the zoning ordinance and the site plan review regulations, a key one was to implement the recommendations of the master plan, which was completed in 2005 and had a number of land use and zoning recommendations. Sustainability, environmental sustainability was a key theme in that master plan, and so there have been added provisions in the zoning ordinance to address that, although they're not all in one place, they're somewhat spread throughout the ordinance and through the site plan review regulations. One of the other objectives is to balance maybe some increased flexibility, so we're not stuck in a particular direction that doesn't make sense, but to make sure there's predictability of how the ordinance plays out. We've tried to provide some alternatives in the ordinance that are -- there are two different ways, in some cases, that a person could develop on a particular site. Balancing resource protection with private property and economic development, using common sense. As we've gone through the ordinance, we've found many areas that maybe at one time they made sense. Conditions have changed, maybe they're just hard to interpret right now, so we've tried to make this a more common sense ordinance, and to make it more user-friendly so that more people can understand it. It's a very difficult ordinance to follow in some places right now. We started the process in April of 2006, so it's been over three years that we've been working on the project. We've had over 45 meetings with the planning board, eight city council work sessions or meetings, a dozen meetings with other municipal boards, and during this whole -- this time, we've also been continuing to receive referrals from the city council. Whenever a zoning change is proposed to the city council or requested, the city council has to refer it to the planning board under our ordinances. And so a number of those have gone through. There was a workforce housing zoning proposal that was done around the Atlantic Heights affordable housing proposal. There was a non-residential planned unit development proposed on Lafayette Road opposite Elwin Park. There was a proposal to ban or control formula businesses, chain businesses, in the downtown area that didn't get adopted. There was a -- we looked at changing the building height regulations in the Central Business A District. And then the big one, which is ongoing right now, is the senior housing proposal, which came, I think initially in 2007, and it's been moving along somewhat slowly, and it has actually come to the point where we're looking at them together as part of this overall revision of the ordinance, but they came on two separate tracks. We finished our draft site plan review regulations in April of 2008, and our draft zoning ordinance in June of 2009, and that's where we're -- what we're reviewing now. Some major changes just in terms of format and structure of the ordinance. We consolidated the table of use regulations. There were separate tables for different groups of zoning districts, and we tried to combine them all together, and that helped us to see inconsistencies between the districts because there were different terms used in different sections of the ordinance. And so putting those together helped us to see the inconsistencies, resolve them, and it also helped us to update the ordinance to see, do we really mean that this use should be prohibited in this district but be allowed by special exception in that district? So that was a major task, just grouping that all together. Combined all the dimensional standards in one section, they were spread in different sections of the ordinance. All the overlay districts, the historic district, the floodplain district, the downtown overlay district, the Osprey Landing District, these are all districts that overlay on top of the basic residential, commercial, industrial districts, and we grouped all those in one area where they were spread in different sections of the ordinance before. There were some supplemental use regulations, and some of them were in one section of the ordinance, some of them were interspersed with the use regulations. We tried to pull those out and distinguish them from the use regulations. And a major piece was just going through and defining terms to be more precisely so that we could actually use them more efficiently in the ordinance. Some substantive changes, those were really a format and structure, and some substantive ones, and some of the key ones are this Gateway District that's being proposed along Lafayette Road, which I'll talk about in some detail in a little bit. It's a strategy for the business corridors, and it could be used in other parts of the city. Right now, the initial proposal is to look at it for Lafayette Road. This continuing care retirement community, which is proposed for the area between Borthwick Avenue and Islington Street, that, as I mentioned before, that was a city council referral that was given to the planning board, and planning staff and the planning board have been working with the proposed developer, trying to work out an ordinance that would meet the city's needs as well as the original intent of the proposal. In wetlands, we've expanded the jurisdictional areas covered by the wetlands ordinance and added performance standards relating to stormwater management and vegetation management and buffer zones. We've very significantly changed the downtown parking standards and the options available. And as I mentioned before, we've come up with the idea of sign districts as a better way to, a way that might help us manage signs better. Now, the Gateway District, as we're now conceiving of it, would take the existing general business district, general business and office research districts between the Rye Town Line and the Route 1 bypass. So here's, this is the town line, and it's this light blue area along Lafayette Road, and this is where the bypass is, up in this area. Here's Sagamore Creek coming across, and the urban forestry center, and the industrial park, and so forth. And the objectives of this are to encourage mixed-use development. Right now, these districts do not allow residential development, and they really tend to segregate uses, and they result in a typical suburban strip kind of development. So the idea is to encourage mixing of residential and commercial development, to enhance the character of the corridor development and redevelopment, to allow for expansion of moderate-cost housing just by allowing some multifamily housing to be incorporated, to incorporate pedestrian bicycle access and circulation, and to use the existing transportation infrastructure, the roadway system, efficiently. And this is a series of photos and a visualization that was done by a firm called Urban Advantage that does this all across the country, and it's done for a city in Illinois. We had many versions of this, but many of them seem to be from the southwest and the west, and this one seemed to be more of the idea of what we might envision, an evolution for Lafayette Road. So this existing condition is a typical urban low-density corridor, and then you'll see a series of changes that are photo simulations that basically simulate how either the city could make a change in the corridor or how zoning could make a change. The first one, which is always the easiest to do on a photo and very difficult to do in real life, is taking down the overhead wires. So that was undergrounding utilities, just makes it look a whole lot better to begin with. But then doing some landscaping, putting some landscaping in, just to do some, a little bit of buffering of the edge of the road, is shown as another first step. But then you start looking at the zoning and how you might allow, let's go back a second, you see in this area, there's a very low suburban-type building, and just bringing something that's a little bit more character-defining into the strip improves the character. And one of the things that came out of the, one of the themes that was in the master plan process was making the rest of Portsmouth as special as the downtown, and this could really begin to get at that. Again, bringing buildings closer to the street, shielding parking, making it more pedestrian-friendly, and then incorporating transit. All of these things are things that can be done with a combination of public investment and zoning. Zoning has to allow things to happen, and it has to encourage things that you want to have happen, happen. One of the, a really good example of, in New England, of how this process can happen is a place called Mashpee Commons on Cape Cod, which was an old shopping center, and it was a really rundown shopping center, and a developer came in and basically redeveloped it as a more urban type of area. So this is the shopping center with the supermarket before it was redone, and this is what it's like today. And that supermarket is still there, but it's been kind of wrapped around by a nice walkable community. And that type of thing with urban, with development and urban infill can really improve the character of this type of area. This is the Gateway District. Just to kind of orient you, we've got Walmart and Southgate Plaza, Water Country, Market Basket, the Old Yolans. There are a lot of fairly large sites in this area, and they will eventually be redeveloped, maybe not tomorrow, maybe not in a few years, but if we have the zoning in place to allow the right type of redevelopment, we'll be ahead of the game. So in this proposed Gateway District, we have uses that are allowed and uses that would be allowed by conditional use permit. And the allowed uses would be based on the existing regulations in the general business district, but a key thing is that the front yards would be reduced. Right now, there's a 105-foot front setback required along Lafayette Road, and it was partly for, to move buildings back from the street and partly to make way for an eventual widening of Lafayette Road. We've talked to the state engineers, and they're thinking about a long-term, consistent 92-foot cross-section for Lafayette Road. So that helps us define how far, how close we can get buildings to the road. And so we've, we're defining a much smaller front yard, minimum front yard, and actually having a maximum front yard to encourage parking to be behind that front yard. And then, and that in and of itself would help to improve the character of redevelopment. But the conditional use permit, which is being called a gateway plan development, it would be an optional use within the Gateway District, would allow a mix of residential uses if they're in a mixed-use development, not residential by itself, residential as part of a mixed-use development. A further reduction of the front yard, a greater coverage of the lot, and the incentive for planned development, for allowing that, the development to be of a higher quality is the additional development potential that might happen. The next, I guess, major change, most significant change, is what we're looking at in the downtown parking system. That system, the current system, was adopted in 1997, and its purpose was to promote shared parking in garages and to discourage individual lots that would break up the streetscape of the downtown area. They basically, in a downtown, because it's such a walkable area, you want to have central or grouped facilities, shared facilities, where people can get out of their cars and walk around rather than requiring each lot to provide its own parking. And that worked for many years, but there are some challenges. One of the challenges is that we're still, whenever a project comes in, we still have to go back and look at, all the way back to 1997 to see what was on the lot at that point. It's a convoluted ordinance. It's becoming increasingly complex as multi-tenant buildings get redeveloped and re-tenanted and so forth. It's very hard to implement, and it's very hard to understand by the, kind of, a normal person. So we've been looking at revisions for a long time. The Economic Development Commission has been involved in studying this for many years, and every, just everything that we do is going to be a tough, a tough thing to do, but we think it's time to bite the bullet and move ahead with that. So in terms of, there are really three elements to what we're proposing as far as downtown parking. One is modifying the parking regulations downtown to better reflect downtown parking demands. People, you don't need as many parking spaces perhaps per square foot in a downtown area as you do at a shopping mall because you have people, multiple users of spaces, as I mentioned before, people getting out of their cars and walking around rather than driving from business to business. The second thing is updating the in-lu fee amount. Right now, there's a provision that allows and really encourages a developer to pay an in-lu fee, a fee in lieu of actually providing the parking spaces, but that fee is so low that it is a very, very tiny percentage of the actual cost of providing parking. So we're recommending that that be updated to represent a larger share of the cost of providing public spaces. And then the in-lu fee calculation, and basically, it's one word, it's simplify. It's become so complicated, as I said, so we've tried to simplify that. In terms of modifying the parking regulations, the one thing we're doing, we're proposing is that we eliminate any parking requirement at all for a first-floor use other than a restaurant use. And that's because those are the uses that really are, restaurant uses do generate a lot of parking demand, but other uses are the uses that really depend on people walking around the downtown, popping into stores, and so forth. And so those can be served by the on-street spaces, by the garage spaces, by the surface lot spaces, and so they, we really don't need to apply a parking requirement for them. The second part of it is to standardize parking requirements based on floor area. Right now, we have, depending on how you use the upper floor of a building, if you use it for a residential use, you'd have one parking requirement; if you use it for an office use, you'd have a different one. And it's just to simplify this, we're looking at making that a standard parking requirement based on square footage. And then the final thing is to deduct the first four spaces, after we've gone through the whole calculation, to deduct the first four spaces. And the intent of that is to really avoid hurting a small property owner. And again, the small properties are really the lifeblood of a town, of a downtown like Portsmouth, and something that's the equivalent of a two-family house or maybe a 1,000-square-foot office or commercial building. It's very hard for them to perhaps provide parking onsite because often these lots are very small, the building covers the entire site, or to pay a substantial fee. So that's, so all in all, this would reduce parking requirements overall and specifically reduce it for the smallest users. Then the second part is to update and simplify the fee. And one aspect of this is that we are proposing that onsite parking for new residential development be required, that there shouldn't be an in-lu fee, because those are the spaces that, when a snow emergency comes and it's hard to find spaces and the garage is full, that's where you run into problems, the residents who've just moved into downtown and have no place to park. So, and that does create the congestion in those situations. So we're proposing that as a significant change. We're also proposing to increase the in-lu fee so that it ultimately represents 40% to 50% of the cost of providing a parking space. And this sort of, it leads toward the idea of equal cost sharing between the local government and the private developer. And then to eliminate that 1997 baseline computation, the total parking threshold that is, we have to always look back at when we're doing these computations, and just to look at any increase in parking demand as of the time we're looking at it, not backing into a 1997 figure that has no relevance anymore. And this, one of the things that we're looking at here also is pulling back the area within which this in-lu fee can be used. Right now, it is the existing Central Business District, which goes all the way down Islington Street down to the park, as you can see down here, this very narrow neck of the Central Business District. And we're proposing to actually make it be equivalent to the downtown overlay district, which was adopted a few years ago, which is outlined here in sort of a black-and-white outline, and it's shaded in on this map. And it's just, just a slightly smaller version of the same area, but it's the area that is most closely served by the public parking facilities. Another one, another big change in the ordinance which is generating a lot of interest is the continuing care retirement community proposal, and I mentioned before, that came through as a referral from the city council. It's a new use that's being defined in the zoning ordinance, and it's called a continuing care retirement community, and it's defined so that it includes independent living units, assisted living units, and skilled nursing care units. It has to have all three of those, and the idea is that it allows you to move from one to another as life situations change. And the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, would allow these by a conditional use permit from the planning board, and as I mentioned, it must contain all three types of units. Currently, the current ordinance is a, specifies that it has to be in an office research district within a half-mile of the hospital and at least 35 acres on one or more lots. And the half-mile radius is this inner circle here, and the area that's, I'm not sure that you can see it, but the yellow areas are the areas that are office research zone parcels. The red area, the pink area, is the hospital, sorry about that, and the, there's an outlined area right in here, which is the current proposal for Borthwick Village. So that gives you the idea of what a 35-acre site is like in that area. There are computations where there's a certain amount of developable land area required for each type of dwelling unit. Maximum height is set at 50 feet, except that if you're less than 150 feet from a residential district, you can only be three stories or 40 feet in order to minimize the, or to reduce the impact on the adjoining residential areas. Setbacks of 50 feet from a parcel boundary, 100 feet from a residential district, requiring at least 40% of the developable area to be usable open space, and any areas within 100 feet of a residential district to be vegetated buffer area. So we're recognizing there's a larger-scale development, and that if it goes in there, it needs to be developed in such a way that it protects an adjoining area from any impacts. These are not the proposed buildings, but these are examples of this type of development and the scale that we're talking about, four-to-five-story buildings. It can be all sorts of different building styles, and these are just several examples from various places actually in Massachusetts. And this is the site plan of the proposed development. We've had many hearings and, or many hearings and workshops on the development itself and on that proposal, and we're just now folding that proposal into the overall zoning ordinance revision. In terms of resource protection, sustainability, and specifically wetlands protection, we have made changes in the wetland section to expand coverage. Right now, under the existing ordinance, a wetland is only covered if it is, it's only jurisdictional if it's half an acre or more, and the proposal is to reduce that threshold to 10,000 square feet, basically cutting about a quarter of an acre, so cutting the jurisdictional size in half. And that sounds like it would be a significant change, but on this map, it may be hard to see, but this, these shaded areas are the areas that are currently jurisdictional, that are either wetlands areas or buffer areas using the half-acre rule. And then there are darker, they're almost like dark-blue dots through here, and those are the additional wetlands that are, that would be brought in if, by reducing that jurisdictional threshold to 10,000 square feet. And the reason you don't see that much is many of those areas are already within the buffer areas of larger, of the larger districts. And we're adding vernal pools in, which are important for amphibians, and again, most of those are in wetlands as well, but if you could see this more clearly, these are little red dots, there's one there and one there, and there are a couple of others. But there aren't, there are very few that are not already covered by the existing ordinance. But the important thing is that we're recognizing a smaller threshold. Many agencies even recommend a smaller threshold, but this is a, felt a good place for Portsmouth to be in terms of its regulations. And then we've added in some best-management practices for stormwater and for, and some vegetation management areas within the buffer areas around wetlands, just to further protect the wetlands. In terms of sign regulations, signage is a very difficult thing to regulate. It's very important, and it's very, it has, it's very complex. We deal with different types of signs, whether they're hanging, projecting, freestanding, flat against the wall, on a roof, whatever, the area of the sign, the height of the sign, and how, and setback from the sidewalk or the building or the, or the street, and sign illumination, whether you have internally illuminated signs, externally illuminated signs, neon signs. So there are many, many different aspects. And what we've, what we've done is we've tried to create, our approach is to create some sign districts, and we've created, defined in a preliminary way, six groups of areas that would be each individually signed districts. And within those, we have tables that set forth sign types that are allowed, sign areas that are allowed, height and setback, and the different types of illumination that would be allowed. And so this makes it easier to look at, in the same way that by combining all the use tables made it easier to look at comparing use regulations, this makes it easier to see whether we're doing what we mean to do with the sign regulations. In terms of the zoning map, we have some zoning map changes that we've identified already and more that we're working on. One of the key ones that I think is very important is along Islington Street. I mentioned that right now, the Central Business District extends down to the park, then we have this apartment district, which is in light yellow, that is on both sides of Islington Street but has only one block wide or a few houses wide as it crosses. And then there's a mixed residential business district, and then the business district down by Plaza 800 and Sherwin-Williams and Button Factory and all that area. And so what we're proposing to do is to bring the Central Business District back up toward, just about to the client's furniture. And obviously, clients is a place we're choosing because that's already in the development process. It doesn't make sense to try to include that and make that non-conforming. So we're stopping at that area, and then we're proposing to bring this existing mixed residential business district up the rest of Islington Street. And what that does is it has a lower allowed height. Instead of having a 60-foot allowed height, we're down to a 40-foot allowed height, with adjoining residential neighborhoods being a 35-foot height. It has fewer intense commercial uses allowed, uses that would tend to be disruptive to a neighborhood, and it, and has more landscaping, more open space requirements. So it's more, it's more of a transition from business to residential than going straight from the very intense, most intense district, a commercial district. a neighborhood, and it, and has more landscaping, more open space requirements. So, it's more, it's more of a transition from business to residential than going straight from the very intense, most intense district, a commercial district, the Central Business B District, straight to a, to a residential district. Another set of changes has to do with the historic district. This was done in consultation with the Historic District Commission, and there are, there are three specific area changes, and then one more nuanced change. The first one is, oops, sorry, the first one is on Islington Street, right now, the historic district extends down to Dover and Union, and the proposal is to bring it down to the intersection of Bartlett Street and Jewel Court. So, it brings it another three or four blocks down, right to that major intersection. The second change is on Lafayette Road, right now, well, actually, right now, the district comes down Middle Street to the Middle Road Lafayette Road intersection, and this would bring it down to, down Lafayette Road two blocks to the Lafayette School and the intersection of South Street. The third one, there's a little donut hole or something up here at Hanover Street, between Bridge Street and the Von Mall, just a couple of lots, that the historic, current historic district wraps around, and we're proposing to rezone, or to include those in the historic district. And the final change is along Middle Street, right now, it's a, it's a consistent distance back from, from the roadway that is included, so you have some, some lots on side streets that are, that get a back corner of their, of their lot included, and, and it, it doesn't necessarily conform to what the historic district is intending to do in that area, which is to preserve the character of the houses facing the street. And so, what is being proposed is that instead of having the, the consistent distance back, that we use the lot lines, which is really how it's being used, you can actually tell from the map, that on Islington Street, the lot lines are being used as the boundary of the historic district. And we're proposing to do the same thing along Middle Street. So, these green areas, they're a little, in the backs of lots, these are all areas that would be taken out of the historic district. And then the pink areas, and if you could see it more closely, you'd see more of them, are areas that are parts of existing lots that extend beyond the current area, and we just look at the entire lot as the area to be included in the historic district. At Osprey Landing, there's, there's currently an overlay district called the OR/MV, Office Research/Mariners Village Overlay District, and it's, it's there because of a settlement of a, of a court case a number of years ago, that, and the court case imposed some responsibilities on the city, or the city assumes some responsibilities with respect to making sure that the development has a certain mix of office and residential, and ownership residential versus rental residential, and affordable versus market rate. And basically, that development has been pretty much built out. So, the only things that are really, from that, from that court settlement, that are really still applicable are the mix of res, of ownership and rental units, and the mix of affordable and market rate units. So, what we're proposing to do is to make a, is, is to rezone that entire area to the underlying district. So, the off, the areas that are currently being developed as office park would be developed, would be zoned as office research, the areas that are currently single residence would be zoned as for single residence, and so forth. And we, we would be left essentially with a small area, and it's hard to see on this map, but it's this area, right in the middle there, that would be the, the remaining overlay district that only affects those remaining tenure and affordability requirements. One, another referral that we have received from the, from the City Council is the area that's essentially bounded by the Route 1 bypass, the railroad tracks, Bartlett Street, Kate Street, and Cottage Street over in this area. And there's a, there's a request from property owners in that area to rezone from industrial to general business, and we're beginning to look at that. There are a lot of issues around that, some of them are traffic issues, some of them are environmental issues, but we, it's not simply a question of which is the best zoning district, it's a question of how does this kind of impact the wider areas? Can, can a rezoning actually reduce impacts for some of the neighbors who live on, on Cottage Street, or affect traffic on maybe Denet or Maplewood, so forth, so, I'm sorry, Denet or Woodbury? So, the, so we'll, we'll be looking at that. And there, then there are other rezoning requests that we've received over the past couple of years that are, that we will be looking at also. And in, in the future, maybe not in, in this stage, but in the future, we want to look at the, some of the areas in the city where there are large numbers of non-conforming lots, that we've, we've looked at the zoning, and in some neighborhoods, almost every lot doesn't conform to the existing zoning. The zoning was applied after the area was developed, maybe a lot, the lot sizes in the zoning were increased, and so you have areas like Elwyn Park, and Maple Haven, and Panaway Manor, where a majority, and sometimes all the units, all the lots are, are non-conforming. And this, this, these maps are examples of an analysis that we did, where we were looking at the percent by which the lot area failed to meet the minimum lot size. And so you can see down here off, Maple Haven, off Lafayette Road, entire neighborhood seems to be non-conforming, and, and then this is the Elwyn Park area up here, same type of thing. So, we're going to be looking at that, and trying to come up with, I think, look neighborhood by neighborhood, to make sure the zoning is context-sensitive, that it, that it really reflects each individual neighborhood. And Atlantic Heights is, is a key example of, of the kind of neighborhood that, that's kind of shoehorned into a zoning, a particular zoning district, and if we can make it, the zoning fit the neighborhood, that would be what we'd like to do. In terms of implementation, the City Council needs to adopt the zoning ordinance, it needs to amend the planning board ordinance, and with respect to City Council referrals, it needs to amend the site plan review ordinance, to bring in three- and four-unit buildings into the, into the site plan review, and the planning board itself adopts the site plan review regulations. And the process going forward, we've, we've got the draft land use regulations on the city's website. I know some people were having problems downloading, but they think that maybe they were, they were going to the existing ordinance rather than the proposed ordinance, because the existing ordinance is a huge document, the, the proposed ordinance is, is much smaller in terms of file size, but the website, you can go right to the planning department website, and actually, you can link to it right from the front page of the city's website now. So, you can download those regulations, you can actually submit the comments online, we have an online comment form on that page, to, to submit any comments, as well as telephone number, email address, and so forth. In terms of the planning board completing its process, this is the next-to-last public hearing, the last one, the fourth and last one is scheduled for September 10th. Then the planning board will review comments and decide what changes to incorporate in the draft ordinance before recommending it to the City Council, and we're aiming for October 13th as the date that we would present it to the City Council. And then from there on, it's up to the City Council with this public hearing process and its vote on adoption. I've handed out, as I mentioned, the comments that we've received at the first two public hearings. These are not, don't want you to be mistaken, these are not our proposals, I've just recorded straightforwardly what was said at those hearings, and some of them have to do with kind of format, like this first one, somebody knew to the ordinance, said, you know, I don't know what these zoning districts mean, because you just included a brief statement of what each district, what the intent of each district is, and that seems like a, a fairly reasonable request, and something we'd like to look at. There was, at the last hearing, somebody who lives in the apartment district was, was feeling like this was an area that a lot of problems were occurring because of absentee landlords, and, and neglect of properties, and so, considering, she suggested designating our apartment districts in other areas of the city. Several people have, have recommended expanding the Gateway District to include other areas besides Lafayette Road, and that's something we could, we could look at as well, maybe, maybe in the first phase, maybe in a, in a second phase later on. The recommendation or request has been made to allow expansion of existing residences in the waterfront business district, where they're not currently allowed, to allow limited business districts in, in residential districts, like a neighborhood corner store. A recommendation was made to encourage compact development, more compact development by changing the eventual regulations in the residential districts. A lot of comments about the continuing care retirement community, but they could really be grouped into, I think, two categories. One is removing the site requirements, that I mentioned before, the thirty-five-acre minimum and the half-mile radius from the hospital. And I would note that in, when the proponents came in originally back in December 2006, I think it was 2006 or 2007, they proposed a five-acre minimum site area and a one-mile radius from the hospital. So, somewhere in between, there may be some, some room to look at changes there. And then another one, particularly from people who are immediate abutters on Islington Street, was the request to remove the requirement for two separate accesses to it, so you only allow one public access, and not, and specifically not to allow public access onto Islington Street. One issue where I'm, I'm sure that, you know, this is an example of how you have to be very careful on how you, how you make these changes, it was brought to our attention a couple of weeks ago, that in terms of motor vehicle sales, that we had made some changes from the existing regulations that were, that made more of the existing dealerships in the city non-conforming, probably about half of the dealerships in the city are non-conforming right now, and this would almost take, almost all of the rest of them, make them, them non-conforming. What we had done is we had, in the process of discussing this, expanded the required setback between a motor vehicle sales use and a residential district, and also had changed the wording so that it was a separation from a district, of a, from a, a use on a lot from a district, rather than the use itself from a district, which compounded things, you'd have to look at a map to understand what it, what it means, but I think that there's a, there's a valid point here, and we will definitely look at this, and, and perhaps make a recommendation to move back toward the existing regulation. There was recommendations made to repeal all local wetlands regulations in the city, and to follow state wetlands regulations, which is a fairly strong recommendation, and to not include any man-made wetlands as jurisdictional areas. And then there were concerns about signs, what can be better done, done to better define sign, so we don't have the repetition of the confusion that we've had recently about what is a sign? And a recommendation or request was made to consider prohibiting all internal illumination of signs. Right now, we're prohibiting them in the historic district, and we're proposing to expand that somewhat, but the recommendation was made to, or the request was made to consider prohibiting all internal illumination. So, that is a summary of the, the ordinance, and I am going to move this podium back to the front, so that people can come up and make comments.
And we'd like to take public comments, I, I guess I'd just like to follow up on one little piece of what Rick mentioned, which is, the purpose of this evening is to take public comments, public input, but we won't be responding to questions, or, you know, reviewing issues. As he mentioned, I think that that will happen at kind of the end of the process, which will be, I think we're going to talk this evening later on about our schedule, but probably in September, maybe at the September 10th meeting, we'll begin discussing, reviewing all of the comments that we've received, and what kind of changes we are interested in trying to implement. So, when you come to the podium, please state your name and address.
John Grossman, 170 Mechanic Street, representing the Portsmouth advocates. I have not read all 250 pages, as you can well imagine. Our interest is particularly in Section 10.630, the historic district. Let me say one thing, I'm not sure if it was left out intentionally, but if you look at the current zoning ordinance, and Article 10, there are a lot of notes that are associated with the ordinance that affect different parts of it, and are, help describe what is meant. I hope these notes will be implemented again. In fact, last night, the HDC used one of them when trying to decide a case. So, the notes that were in there in the past are important, and such as, in 10.631.30, it says, "Within the historic district, in each instance, the appropriate level of review shall be based upon the scope of proposed activities." Wow. I could take that and make it this way, or make it, or make it, spread it out. Though it's one that I would think would need a note to sort of explain what is meant by that. By the way, I thought this was very well done, and I congratulate everybody who was involved in it. I'm not quite sure, maybe it's my reading, it's under the exemptions for certificate approval, and Item 7's mechanical equipment or ventilation terminators, "When the volume or mass of an end of device does not exceed twenty-seven cubic feet, or extend more than four feet above the roof plane, or extend more than one foot out from the roof plane." I guess at some point, I'll approach Cindy or somebody individually, or Rick, and find out, it seems to me you're saying a roof plane is here, and you can bring out AC equipment like this, maybe I'm reading it wrong. One thing that I think is important, the application contents, I'm looking at Paragraph 10.634.21, and it says, "Everything that should be done," which was very well done, "except it does not include that a plan has to have dimensions." And I say that because in prior meetings, we've had, and this is not for small projects necessarily, but includes both small projects and large projects, that dimensions haven't been included. In fact, I may be wrong, David, maybe you can correct me, but I think the very last minute, we realized that the Eagle project, Eagle Photoshop project didn't have a full set of dimensions on it, and they had to postpone it for a week, or a month, until it came back with dimensions. So, I think it's very important to cite that dimensions be included in the plans. Okay, this one I feel, or we feel, I should say, very, very strongly about. In, on work sessions, and I'm on Sections 10.635.23, there is no requirement to notify abutters of a work session. I think that is 100% wrong. In today's world, many of us like me don't necessarily get the newspaper. Today's world, how would I know if my neighbor was going to build a ten-foot fence? How would I know if something was going to happen, and there was going to be a work session? And what happens with work sessions? When they come before the HDC, and you have one work session, and then two work sessions, and then three work sessions, all of a sudden, the HDC members take ownership of this project. They're, they're human, what can I say? And especially when you get into 100 Market Street, and you have a year and a half of work sessions. And if the abutter doesn't know to be at a work session, they won't know anything about the project until it's coming up for approval. Now it comes up in front of the HDC for approval, the members of the HDC have sat there and gone through these work sessions, they've recommended improvements, they've recommended changes, they've recommended different things, and the contract, or the architect, or the owner have helped out, and they've made these changes, and everything is looking really fine, and now I, as an abutter, finally hear about it. And I come in, and I'm coming in, and I'm fighting an uphill battle. I think it's absolutely wrong not to let no, abutters know about work sessions, they are important. Now, I understand it's expensive to send out for every work session. I don't know if you could send out and say, "This is the beginning of work sessions for this project, and people then are responsible for following it on the government, on the city website, whatever," but somehow, abutters need to know about work sessions. Interelystingly enough, over in Section 10.635.50, notices, it says, "Notices of public hearings and work sessions shall provide the Serp, the following information." So, it is there, it's recognized that somebody's supposed to be getting this information. Also in that section, under notices, it says, "A brief description of work using one or more of the following statements," and it lists the following statements. One thing it doesn't list is what happens if a project, i.e. Pier 2, i.e. Portwalk, has been approved, and now they're coming back for adjustments. And there's no, nothing here that says that they have been notified, or have prior approval of adjustments. Somehow, again, abutters need to know it, and it has to be included in the city's worksite, that they're coming back for adjustments. If you go down to Review Factors, Paragraph 10, 635.60, number four, it says, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it says, "Importance relative to recognized individual going to read the whole thing, but it says, "Importance relative to recognized individual or event." Again, that's not very clear. If you look at the old set of zoning ordinance, and you look at Paragraph, it says, got a footnote number three, it explains it, what it means. So that's why I say the footnotes are important. This doesn't concern me, but I guess you need to look at it. We're talking about time period for review, and it says 30 days, and I, I didn't work it out to say, gee, 30 days, enough time, but it seems like when the HDC docket is filled, and then it goes on for another week, you might be very tight. I found it interesting in Appeals, in Section 10, 636.52, that you say, "No ground set forth in an application of the commission for rehearing shall be the consideration by the, considered, or under, shall be considered consideration by the Board of Adjustment or a court unless the court for good cause shows it allows the applicant to specify additional grounds." Are you saying, as a city, you can tell the court what to do? I found that just, that's affected me, but it's very interesting that you had that in Then I went through, and I found all the little things that affected the HDC, and there was one that's been around, and I'm sure there's a good reason for it, I'm not quite sure why. I'm in Section 10.1274.10, about signage, a wall sign greater than 10 square feet in areas, it'll be at least two-thirds as wide as the building frontage of the structure. I realize that's not new, but it seems like, again, there should be a footnote as to how, whether two-thirds is appropriate, or whether it fits the building. Depends upon the windows, depends upon everything else, and just to say two-thirds, has to fit two-thirds across, I found a little unusual. I think that's it. Again, congratulations. I love the gateway. As you know, the Advocates have fought for things that have happened on the gateway, and we strongly believe that they should be protected when coming into the city. I, if anyone's interested, I've taken these sections that affect the HDC, and they've been extracted. Instead of picking up the entire 265-page document, if you go to portsmouthadvocates.org, you can drop down a PDF of just those items that affect overlay districts and affect the HDC. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Ralph DiBernardo, 1374 Islington Street. I'm here tonight to speak for my wife, Linda, and I. I will be brief with my first comment, because it's related to the comments I made last week. We do want to state again our objection to the Paragraph 10.734.53 in the continuing care retirement community section that specifies two separate travel paths. Inasmuch as the planning department wrote this document, and the planning board approved it and sent it forward, it's, it's obvious to us, it was written to accommodate a proposed development between Islington and Borthwick Avenue. I think that's easy to see. Our concern, as we've stated before, is that that, the way this is written, it will lead to a permanent full entrance on Islington Street. And I want to caution the board, at least to look at it from a different perspective. This rigid requirement could derail a good project. If other boards of the city council did not approve one of the two accesses for safety and traffic impact reasons, it could be the end of a good project. If you gave some leeway and allowed one of those accesses to be for emergency use or opened in the event that the other access were closed because of a train derailment or that nature, then it would, it could be functional, and I think you should look at that. And that's my final comment on that issue before this board. Having, having the document in my hand, I came upon something else that concerns us. We had the experience of having a small, single-family house next door to us sold to a single individual who proceeded to rent out three rooms. And at the time this happened, we found that there were no regulations, at least as I was told by the officials at City Hall, that could help us with any relief. This came with a serious parking issue. We live on Upper Islington Street, where the lots are 50 by 100, and the houses cover 20% of the lot, and most, most residents in that little part of the neighborhood don't even have two off-street parking, unless they're one behind the other. It corrected itself in time, because the occupancy changed. But it got me looking at, at this document, and I ran into something that I think needs correction. When I went looking for this, what I found was a definition, in the definitions, a boarding house. Your definition of boarding house is the definition of a rooming house in every dictionary I looked in. A boarding house in the dictionary is described as a place that rents rooms and provides meals. A rooming house is defined, in most dictionaries, as a place that rents rooms. You've defined a rooming house under the title boarding house. And when you read that paragraph, it says, "See also rooming house." You have no rooming house reference in here, unless it's hidden somewhere out of alphabetical order. But it refers me to rooming house, and there is none listed in your definitions. With that in mind, and I think you should have a look at it, I don't know why we'd want to be in conflict with classic definitions in the dictionary, but what I believe I found, and I know you're not going to help me out tonight, so I may have to come to the planning office to find out if I'm correct. It looks to me like anyone can rent out three rooms in their house and not come under any of the stipulations in here for boarding house or rooming house or whatever it should be. I can tell you from experience that renting out three rooms doesn't mean three people. One room can be occupied by two people. That, at one point, produced somewhere between four and six cars in, in a neighborhood that has no parking to accommodate it. I was curious to, if any one of you maybe caught a piece presented on 60 Minutes, it actually was actually a couple of years ago, but I found it very interesting, because it relates to this. They did a piece on a Midwestern town that was being unduly burdened by parents of college students buying single-family houses to house their child while they were in college, because they found out that they could pay for it and actually make some money by having their student rent out rooms to additional students. And what struck me at the time we saw this was the similarity physically between the pictures of this neighborhood in Elwin Park here in Portsmouth. It was an Elwin Park neighborhood, and they were there on a Saturday night when there were 150 kids for a college beer party at a house that had become a rooming house legally in that community. I think something has, I think renting out three rooms in a home is excessive, particularly when there's no reference to how many people can be in that room, as I read this. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Paul Mantle, 1490 Islington, Islington Street. Missing some board members tonight. It's kind of disconcerting. All my comments are related to Sections 10, Spot 730, the CCRC. I missed the past couple of meetings, but I do have some comments. And I'm going to categorize this in two separate ways. Whether or not the CCRC is site-specific. Let's say it is. Let, you know, and I'm using that based on Rick's original presentation, you know, and the comments by the board members, you know, saying that this is the best we can do, and we should embrace it. If it is site-specific, it violates the master plan, specifically Master Plan LU 7.6, which calls for a comprehensive study of this particular parcel. This study has not been done. And if you include this, you have two city documents, two city working documents, which are in conflict with each other. As commented by the last meeting, if it is site-specific, then this, this section is the definition of spot zoning. Okay? It guarantees the developers a massive developer profit. And I would think that one of the most prominent land use attorneys, Bernie Peelich, in this town, saying it's spot zoning would carry some weight. But I didn't see that included in any of the comments about the CCRC. And finally, if it is spots, if it is site-specific, including this, I believe, sets a dangerous precedent for the city, because you're basically legalizing spot zoning. Any developer who doesn't get his way could easily sue and use this as the, you know, basis of the suit, because you've done it before. But let's take a step back. Let's say it isn't site-specific, because Rick Tainer said in his presentation, it wasn't site-specific. It applies to a number of parcels in the city. Okay. It's still an included use in the office research zoning. It's not a housing project. It's not a residential project. It's an office research use, which means, in essence, it's another form of medical facility, albeit a age and economically exclusive medical facility, but it's not anything else other than a medical facility. You're tying it to the hospital. In that vein, Section 10, Spot 733, Spot 30, access. The access should be the same as everything else in the office research district, especially when you're tying it to that particular hospital. You've even made it a, you know, stipulation, it has to be a half-mile from the hospital. It's right next to Jackson Gray, or, shouldn't be that, should be, shouldn't be site-specific, but it should have the same access as every other facility in that, you know, with that zoning. And it shouldn't impact any surrounding residential facilities. I mean, it's, it's just unheard of. And going back to your, you know, the section that Ralph mentioned, 10734.53, two access points. I agree, there should be two access points. Still shouldn't impact any residential facility. You could have two access points on Borthwick Avenue. Granted, you know, if you have a graded rail facility, that may be impacted by the rail. You could have a overpass, the rail facility, which wouldn't be impacted by any disaster on the train. You could have an access point on WBX Road and continue WBX Road all the way to Borthwick Avenue and close it from Islington Street. I mean, the majority of the people, we live on Islington Street, have no problem with anything going up there. We knew something was going to go there eventually. We have a problem with anybody accessing it from our neighborhood. We've got enough problems as it is. Under Section 10735, conditional use permit criteria, you have a Item Spot 40, which is the set-aside for community purposes, included senior facility, recreational facility, or a rail facility with land for building and parking. I would stipulate you would need at least five acres to accomplish any of that, and that set-aside should be deeded back to the city. Why would you have a conditional use if the set, if it was, the land it was built on was still owned privately? The parking alone would be, take four acres of that, especially if it's a rail facility. If the line ever comes back in use, you're looking at the same size parking lot as you would have for C and J. So anything less than five acres, you know, you won't be able to do anything with it. At the bottom, the conditional use permit criteria, I would add, add the stipulation, because this is not site-specific, once again, that the CCRC overlay does not apply to the 41 acres between Borthwick and Islington Street. Because if it did apply, once again, you're violating the master plan, LU 7.6. The comprehensive study has not been done. And a final note, since it's not site-specific, I would add that adding Section 10.730, CCRC, to be included into the draft zoning, the big document, was improper. And the reason I say that is because the vote was improper. Mr. Coker had to recuse himself. Why? It wasn't site-specific. There was no, it had nothing to do with anybody in the audience. It wasn't site-specific, so there was no reason for the recusal. Therefore, the vote to get it into this big document was improper. Thank you.
Anyone else interested in commenting, sharing thoughts about the draft zoning ordinance?
Second time.
Well, we appreciate the input this evening. And just in case somebody's out there in the hallway, because I did hear voices at a point, you know, in case there are any other second-time speakers or people out in the hallway that want to come up, please feel free. And also, as Rick Tainer mentioned, we're taking input via the website, cityofportsmouth.com too, so keep that in mind.
And before we close, you want to close the public hearing, but we, did you want to talk about the schedule of meetings going ahead?
Right, yes. Thank you for the reminder. Yeah, so I think it looks like, since we don't have new or second-time speakers, we can close the public hearing and try to discuss next steps in terms of the process for completing the zoning ordinance revision.
And I think that since you don't have a quorum, you can't actually make a decision on this. Do you have a quorum?
We have five.
We do have a quorum, okay, okay.
We're good.
So we had recommended, if I could just look over your shoulder, we'd recommended a series of meetings to try to take us through, to get to the point of actually completing this process by the 13th. What we're trying to do is get, get this to the, the council by their, I think it's October 19th.
You're right.
By the meeting of the 19th, so we need to get them on the 13th. And that gives them basically two months to complete their process. So we're hoping that they'll be able to do that before the end of the calendar year. So in order to do that, unfortunately, we have to ask you to give up some more Thursday nights. So we have a, our last public hearing is currently scheduled for the 10th. We have our regular meeting on the 17th. And so we're actually suggesting that the next three Thursdays be held aside for discussion of this. And what we would do is we would, after the 10th, we would prepare a comment sheet, we would take the sheet that we already have, expand this, add some comments from the staff on it. We've been making some notes about some details, like typos, and for example, the point about the rooming house, I'm glad that was brought up, because that was a leftover cross-reference. We used to have a rooming house in, in this draft, and we had taken it out. So that's the type of thing we would, we would fix. The October 1st may not be needed, but we'd like to hold it just in case we need to have another meeting for discussion. And then on the, we would hope that on the 8th, we could have a special meeting to vote on the final draft that you would submit to the city council.
Great. So the next public hearing, just a reminder, would be September 10th on this draft revised zoning ordinance. So if you have other comments that you'd like to share in the public hearing context, please put that on your calendar. And the next regular meeting of the planning board will be September 17th. So, yes, Tony?
If it's appropriate, can we, can I request from the city staff, I don't know if I report back, but on Mr. DiBernardo's question about the number of people allowed to live in a unit, what in a unit, what, what the city attorney and staff believes are required? Because I mean, I think you raised a good point, and I don't know if it's appropriate now to bring it up, but I'd like to find out what, what's allowed.
We can certainly look into it. I'm not sure I'll be able to get to you immediately, and we can try to get that information. I think part of it is, you know, some of it is the definition of family, you know, that, that you can have up to five unrelated people living in a house just by, just by law. So it's a, there's that, there's that part, but I guess the question about...
That state law, or?
I believe that's a...
Durham has no more than three unrelated...
Maybe, I'm not sure. Maybe that is our city, city law that I'm not really sure. It's a common measure.
I mean, what I would suggest, Tony, is since that was a comment made at the public hearing, just like all the other comments, we'll comment back on that, because if anything, I think we've actually reined in where boarding houses, boarding houses are allowed in town, so. But, good, good issue. We'll, we'll take a look at it in a little bit broader way than Ralph brought up, which was the definition of rooming house, but his bigger issue.
I think just for clarification, I hope it's clarification, I hope it's not a mistake, but the city adopted a separate ordinance, which is, is that a boarding house or a rooming house ordinance? I'm not sure. But we, we had, that was a separate ordinance to deal with a specific issue, and we wanted to make sure that we weren't in conflict with that city ordinance.
And that's not the question I'm bringing up. That's a separate issue.
I know, I know. That was, Cindy could just mention that one, too.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll set. Any other comments, thoughts? Okay, great. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.